Call the meeting to order. For quick. Like allegiance.
President of the United States of America, and the Republic of which stands one nation, unutterable, indivisible, infinite in its essence, SRO.
Court of attendance. Kristen, here, Joanna, Stacy, myself, Amador, gonna be late, get the, we talked to anybody? Right now, there's four of us here. We have a court. We have a public hearing for school resource, resources officer contract. Stacy, would you like to read that?
The agreement between the Eldred Central School District Board of Education and the law enforcement agencies, as such Sullivan County Sheriff's Office, shall be to furnish sworn law enforcement officers to serve as school resource officers, assigned to public schools in the Eldred Central School District. These officers may have instructional and non-instructional responsibilities. Resource officers' non-instructional responsibilities consist of handling any situations that require law enforcement support and/or intervention, attending school activities, and supervising the campus. Eldred Central School District and its principals will benefit greatly from the partnership with the local law enforcement agencies. All principals and contacts receive an overview of the SRO goals and expectations of the district code of conduct. An appropriate staff person from the designated law enforcement agency directly supervises each SRO. The instructional responsibilities may have teaching assignments that consist of the DARE, Drug Abuse Resistance Education curriculum, and specialized short-term programs. These contracts have been coordinated through the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office, and the fiscal impact is the 2019-2020 budget is seventy thousand per officer for school resource officers. Two of our schools are being served, so two officer positions with an annual reimbursement of seventy thousand per officer. So the recommended action is that we approve this agreement between the Eldred Central School Board of Education, Sullivan County Sheriff's Office, Sullivan County, New York, for the school resource officer program. Anyone like to make a motion? I made that motion. Anyone second? I'll second.
Motion by Joanna Dutcher, and second by... Second by Stacy. Any discussion?
Yes, Jean, would you like to introduce your SRO?
Yes, we have the deputy sheriff, Kevin Rogers, who will be joining the junior senior high school as our SRO.
And we've...
We had a meeting with Deputy Rogers on Tuesday to go over his... What we wanted to know was how his role is defined, and how our role is defined. We got lots of questions answered, and we gave it to him in the building. And he has a lot of documents to review, and we work very much forward there.
And officer will be here from the time the kids arrive, roughly, and to dismiss them, which is wonderful. I didn't realize you had to scrape the ice off your own car. Is there anything, is there anything you'd like to share with us? You've done this before.
Yeah, I've never really spoken to a program before. My name's Kevin Rogers, I've known the Sheriff's Office for thirteen years. This is my sixth year as a SRO. It's a challenge, it's a challenge every day, but if you're caps and gowns, and everyone on the bigger better things, it tends to be easy. If I can help in any way, if that possible, I'd be happy to help.
And I have spoken about needing an armed presence in the building since I got here, because we're about a half an hour away from somebody coming to our aid in the event of a tragedy, and having an armed officer in the building is imperative. And we're glad you're here, and you'll find that our kids are great kids.
Thank you.
So are we gonna have an assembly the first week of school in both, both schools to introduce the officers?
I'm not going to do an assembly in my building. I already talked to our SRO, I'm actually physically gonna go around to each classroom.
Okay.
I think I'm going to do that the first day of school, because everybody kinda gets in. We also have a new school psychologist, so I thought that would be warrant. Two new faces, let's go around and introduce them to all the kids.
Perfect.
And we'll meet with the kids in the high school in the gym by grade and introduce you.
Good. Any other discussion? I'm gonna need a roll call vote on this. Kristin? Yes?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Stacy? Yes. So no nays, all yeses, all good. Moving on. Elementary principal report.
Thank you.
Elementary.
Scott, you're up.
Oh, I'm off.
I'm sorry.
All right. Way to go.
We're not, we're different.
All right, our building is coming along very nicely from all of the summer activities that have taken place here, along with the camp, and the outside camp, and the AYSO, et cetera, et cetera. The custodial staff and our secretaries are really doing a great job of making sure that we're ready for the school year to open. Staffing, we met Deputy Stevenson at our last board meeting, so he's one of our new staff members, and also Ms. McWilliams, our new psychologist, was here also. They've both been in, getting the room set up. We showed Deputy Stevenson around the building. Vanessa's been in, Ms. McWilliams has been in, getting things together that she will need to start the school year off on a great note. Do you want me to address the Kickstart Program?
Yes.
So, with the help of our cafeteria staff, Caleb, and some state funds, we will be hopefully approved for a breakfast and lunch program free of charge at McKenzie Elementary School for all students. So, in anticipation of this, we wanted to make sure that we did what we can do to make sure that it runs smoothly at the start of the year. June Hallett, Jill Decker, and myself went to visit Presidential Elementary School in Middletown, maybe about three weeks ago, I think it was. And why that was good for us to visit, they've been part of this program where they fed the kids not only during the school year, but they have a summer school program, and approximately two hundred and fifty or three hundred students they feed in the program in the summer, which is equal to what our number would be during our regular school year. So, we were able, Deborah Dudley is their director of food service, and she spent most of the day with us going over the program, the types of food, how it worked. We were able to stay there for the breakfast, or, as they called it, a pre-fuel program, and we're calling it a Kickstart Program. And their lunch program, which they called a refuel program, so instead of a lunch program. So they had some terminology that worked for their program. We came back with a lot of great ideas, we're looking forward to starting this hopefully on our first day of school. We've been in contact, Jill's been in contact, and Caleb with the state to make sure that we have all of our paperwork in, and that we're just waiting for them to review and give us the okay. So I have a little notice to go out to the parents, and part of my McKenzie brought Buzz to start the school year, so that everybody is aware of what's gonna be provided for kids to open up school this year. So that's our, does anybody have any questions about the Kickstart Program? Lunch program, free of charge. Every kid will get a lunch and a breakfast component, and will be reimbursable for the school district. Based on what we kinda heard when we were at Middletown, there's some positives and negatives about, you know, how you're going to feed that many kids, how we're going to do it, and keep track of, so we're working on all those things, as they said. The first year for them was kind of a work in progress, and I'm assuming that will be the same thing here. Wing cap. This past year, I've been talking to Caleb about allowing us to become electronic in ordering supplies and merchandise in the school. Usually, most of the teachers and staff have to fill out a paper copy, it goes to Caleb, then it goes to Dr. Morgano, then it goes up to our CBO, and they enter all of the information by hand off of the copy, it gets ordered, and then it comes back. Currently, we now can have the ability to enter the stuff on computer, and it actually eliminates the sign-off sheet with us, but we click each step along the way, so any of the teachers in the building that orders something, I can check it and determine if I have enough money in the budget, and then goes to Caleb, Caleb can check out and make sure it's been coded properly, it can go to Dr. Morgano, and it gets ordered electronically through our CBO. So we're hoping that we'll have the last part of that in place sometime during the school year, where teachers enter. Right now, it's a version where just the administrators and the secretaries, and I think custodial, and maybe the cafeteria staff can order electronically. So we're moving toward that for this school year. Along with that, our arts and education poster, that's been made to be online, so the teachers that are requesting funds for that can do so online. And our kindergarten enrollment, as of today, we have twenty-three students enrolled in kindergarten. So I wanted to keep you up to date on that. We had talked about a number that we were going to be at for kindergarten enrollment. If we get up closer to the thirty number, I'm sure that Dr. Morgano will be in touch with you and send that email.
I'll be crying.
Where we are.
I'll be crying.
You'll be crying. We have our pre-K and kindergarten meeting week, the teachers will be coming in on August twenty-eighth, and our PTA is gonna do popsicles on the playground during that day for the kids and their parents, and on the twenty-ninth will be our opening superintendent's conference day. That's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Krebs? I do have one. How many precarers do we have?
Eighteen. We have eighteen precarers.
So do we have a variance for eighteen, or how does that work? Because we had...
That is, that is our number.
That is our number? We've got a variance.
Yes.
Any on a waiting list?
Yes, there's, I believe, one on a waiting list right now. That has all their paperwork and stuff in.
We had, what, fifteen last year, right? Fifteen?
Well, we did something a little bit different last year.
Right.
But eighteen is the number that we can have with a teacher and an aide.
Good. At least it's going up. Okay, good.
Are there choices for the children that have a special diet, like gluten-free, with this new program?
The, it's Jill, Mrs. Decker will be doing a similar type of thing at lunchtime. For the students, they'll have choices, just like they always do, like have salad, make meal, you know, whatever the choices are, right now, they'll be able to do that. Some of the ideas that they did come back with were similar things that you talk about. There was a parfait, yogurt, some things that we hadn't done before, and she's trying to price them out. There's a big concern with the pricing, we get reimbursed so much, so your lunch needs to be around a dollar twenty, I think they were saying. Some lunches come in much cheaper, like a grilled cheese sandwich is much cheaper, but you can't feed that to the kids every day. Other lunches come in a lot more, so she tries to balance that over the course of the week.
And when Caleb speaks, he'll talk about the finance, the finances of the cafeteria program, much improved.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Secondary principal report.
Thank you. Our present enrollment as of today, your agenda says two sixteen, we have presently two hundred and seventeen students in the building for start of school year. If you'd like to make a comparison, we finished the school year with two hundred and thirty-five students. We're opening with two seventeen. Most of that difference comes because of the fact that we graduated forty-eight students, and we have only thirty-three seventh graders entering next year. So that would account for the difference. We have had six students transfer out, but we have had three students transfer in. So that will give you the two hundred and seventeen, and many times you get more in the last couple of weeks. Our seniors have been in for picture day last week, and we will have another session for them after school begins. And next week, Mrs. Padua is having a senior class meeting with our seniors at the high school to discuss all of the senior activities, et cetera. Our summer building work is absolutely coming along fine. We're just a little bit behind our normal schedule, and that's only because we have had custodians who have had to be out for four or five days because of some kind of illness or whatever, but otherwise, the building is ready to go. You have a June two thousand and nineteen Regents exam result in your folders. It also contains, for comparison purposes, the two thousand and eighteen Regents results. Our two thousand and nineteen results are at a level for improved, except in two subject areas, one of those being chemistry, and the other being global studies, where they had to take the transitional exam. You'll note, however, that the mastery level in both those subjects grew since last year, which means we had a larger percentage of students taking all of our tests, who received an eighty-five percent or better on the Regents. And if they continue to do that, that qualifies them for additional accolades on their diplomas when they graduate. You also have in your folders the, what is called the two thousand and fifteen cohort survival report, which is an odd name, but that's what the state calls it. And it reflects the class of two thousand and nineteen, who just graduated in June. When they entered their freshman year at the report date, which we have to the state in early fall, we had fifty-two freshmen. Over the four years, nine students transferred out, leaving forty-three students in the cohort. We are not responsible for those students who transfer out of the district. In addition to the forty-three expected to graduate in two thousand and nineteen, we had three students who were juniors, who are not in the two thousand and fifteen cohort. We'll get credit for them next year because they are listed in the two thousand and sixteen cohort. We have to subtract those three students, because they weren't in their original cohort, which leaves us with forty. We also had two students who were on a five-year plan for graduation, planned from the very beginning, and we get to add those students back into the cohort population, leaving us with forty-two students who were remaining in the cohort. And we, excuse me, we graduated, I'll do it this way, of the cohort of forty-three, forty-two of them graduated. And the state then does the math, and we had ninety-eight percent of our students graduate, which is much greater than it has been in previous years. And I am very, very proud and pleased with that.
It's a lot of hard work.
The teachers, the faculties should be congratulated.
Yep.
On the job, very, very well done. We have a community health fair that is coming to the high school, given by the high school. You can't miss the sign, and it's on Saturday, the twenty-fourth. And Lydia Hayes has, is kind of leading that parade, and we will have outside health-related services and businesses in our gymnasium, open to the public. And we're really excited about that. The Lumberlin Recreation, Town Recreation people sponsor a program every year. We had, on any given day, about thirty children between the ages of four and twelve in the building. They were wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And in summer school, Scott may have gotten the last of our results late this afternoon. As of new time, we did not have all of the summer school Regents results, because they're taking Regents this morning, so we won't know all of the results. And we have approximately fourteen students, most of them having attended the six-week summer school program, but some simply registered to take the Regents in August to see if they could raise their Regents test scores from last June. They've already passed the Regents, they wanna just see if they could do it better. And as we said at the beginning, we had the pleasure of talking to Deputy Rogers, and our SRO program is ready to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Max?
I do. Do we know why six students transferred out?
We have no idea, except that because we received over four years requests for records, they were transferring to another school, which was, as I looked at it, someplace where they would have to move.
So we don't know why they moved, why they left the district?
Why they left the community? I have no idea.
Okay.
That was stuff that we didn't start, kind of keeping track of until the trend of declining enrollment started happening, so this cohort goes all the way back to, what, two thousand and fourteen?
Two thousand and fifteen.
Two thousand and fifteen. So two thousand and fifteen, so those are nine kids over fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. We started kind of keeping track of it towards the end of eighteen, nineteen, so...
Well, no, Mrs. Maxson said that there were two hundred and seventeen students enrolled for this year.
Oh, you meant the total?
Six of those students transferred out. So I was just wondering why six students from now transferred out, not from this cohort.
Oh. And again, it would be the same thing. We have sent, or we have received requests for records because the families have moved out of the district. Why, I can't tell you that.
No, we're gonna put together a little survey and send it out. It's a small number of people, and ask them why they left the community. I think that's important information over time.
Great, because then we can know what to change or whatever.
Easy enough to do.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Max? Superintendent report, you're on, big guy.
I just first want to thank the custodians for doing a great job. There were a couple of injuries over the summer, nothing tragic, but it slowed us down a little bit, but we'll be ready on opening day. Caleb's gonna talk a little bit about the fund balance, it being a positive number. He'll also talk about the lunch program. As you recall, our controller has cautioned us about our lunch program over the years. The costs have come down, and it's much more headed toward the black. Attendance is gonna be a major goal this year. A minimum of ninety-five percent student attendance is needed, is an aid issue, and is a learning issue. If you're not here, you can't progress. I have to thank Aileen Gunther for providing the money for the SROs in year one. Going forward, we'll have funds for it on our own, but without her help, it would have been another year. Another year of no armed presence in the building was not something I was comfortable Once again, I will remind the public, taxes went down this year, they're going up next year to the same rate they were. And I'll say that at every meeting, because when they go back up, inevitably, somebody's gonna say, "I didn't know that." I want to mention that the Code of Thank went to RTI this summer, did a STEAM program for a week, and we're gonna report on our graduates' activities when we have our next meeting. But these are the kinds of things that occur that not too many people hear about, our kids going to RTI, they do very well. I will find out why people left here. I'll put a survey together. We had talked about that in the past, and it'll be, Kim may know, so I'll talk to her first, there may be some people that she knows about. It's usually employment, but let's not assume, and let's find out why. And I look forward to another productive year. Thank you.
Any questions?
Is that a congratulatory scene?
Any questions for Dr. Morgano? All right. District treasurer report, you're up.
Okay, so I'll start with the preliminary year-end results. We're still under audit, so there could be some additional adjustments that occur along the way, but preliminarily speaking, we budgeted for sixteen million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand one fifty in revenue. We got sixteen million nine twenty-six six fifteen, so we got seventy-eight thousand four sixty-five more in revenue than we had anticipated. We are right within point five percent of what we budgeted, so we hit the nail on the head with revenue. On the expense side, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand six eighty-one less than we budgeted. We spent sixteen million five ninety-seven, as opposed to what we budgeted, sixteen million eight forty-eight. All that totals up to a net surplus of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars for the year. I've been told by my auditors that we overbooked our teachers' retirement system payment in payables, and that they intend to lower our expenses by another eight thousand books-wise, so that's eight thousand dollars more that I don't owe that I had booked.
And let's remember, that fund balance when we arrived was a negative number.
Negative sixty-five thousand, thereabouts. It'll be the positive two hundred and change now.
Very good. I like to hear that.
The preliminary year-end results for the cafeteria are also good. We had a deficit this year of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six, as opposed to a deficit last year of fifty-five thousand dollars. This was achieved in a whole number of ways. We reduced some staff, we reduced health insurance costs, we increased prices on the school lunches, we increased prices on certain à la carte, what I had Jill do, me and Jill sat down one day at the beginning of last year, and we went over every item we sold, and we looked at the margins. So certain things we were selling, we were buying for forty cents and selling for fifty cents, that couldn't happen anymore, that went up to seventy-five. If it went beyond what a kid could pay, certain things we had to cut.
Salad bar.
The salad bar had to go. We lost the, we were ordering fresh bagels every morning from D. Felipe's, which while nice, the bagels were about eighty cents instead of thirty-five cents, which we get from our bid. So it was a luxury, so we cut certain things like that. And so we reduced our cost of goods sold by about twenty thousand dollars. We reduced employment, which was, we went half of the year. We reduced employment, which was, we went half of the year without a part-time staff. That was ten thousand dollars, so we're up to thirty. And then we saved another twenty-four thousand dollars on health insurance for full-time staff.
Well, for a program that has historically run over, that's fantastic news.
And another impressive thing is even with, I don't remember the exact number on enrollment, but we did take a big hit on enrollment last year. If everybody remembers, our revenue stayed the same. It was three oh seven. The year before, it was three oh six, and that was with like forty less kids to serve. Expenses went down. We spent three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the program last year. We spent three hundred and eight thousand on it this year. So it was all on the expense side. We kept revenues flat, lowered our expenses drastically. The free lunch program and breakfast program that Scott was talking about, the last contact I'd had with Elizabeth Hannis was on August fifth. She said all of our paperwork was in order. It looked like we qualified. We don't have the final certification yet, so I'm gonna hold my tongue until that comes in. But she said within one to two weeks, that was August fifth. So sometime next week, I should hear from her. We have good news on that. I do expect us to get approved and our math got a little bit better after they reviewed the master list that Ms. Decker sent in. Our percentage of students qualifying went from forty point five to forty-three point five. That three percent gives us an extra, one point six times three is how they do the reimbursement. We get an extra five point six percent of every, of all lunches sold will now get full reimbursement. So that was a, so our math for what we get reimbursed is going up. It's getting a nice bump on that.
Does that impact the high school, the district as a whole?
It does not impact the high school. The high school, we've, we still have, we don't qualify for the program for the high school yet. And I don't anticipate we'll be able to for probably two to three years. I think we should still continue. And I did put it, the ad in the paper this year for people to apply if they qualify. I think we still press the issue and try to get people signed up if they qualify. But realistically speaking, we're at thirty-two percent and it's been going up by about two percent a year. So three, four years is what I would expect before the high school.
We have to keep encouraging the people that otherwise qualify to apply.
Correct. And then we can have a program that offers free lunch for every student and breakfast. We have bus radios. We, I was working with Melissa Muller on getting us portable radios for the entire school district. So we renegotiated our contract with Goostown. Previously, we were releasing eight portable radios and twenty-five bus radios at a cost of eighteen hundred and seventy dollars a month. They gave us eight additional radios, four of which are more high-tech radios that, so Dr. Morgana will be able to contact Melissa Muller from anywhere. So in the event of snow, emergency, he could call her straight from his house.
When there's an issue, she's on the phone and I can't get through to her. The only thing I can do is go there with these radios and I'll be able to get directly in contact with her.
Correct, or she's out driving.
They're gonna work in the river corridor? They, they worked in most of ninety-seven, not all of it. But I could call her from my house on that phone. It's a, it's a different kind of, it uses the phone system, right?
Well, no, it uses both. So it uses our radio system, but to give it added capability, you can attach it to the Wi-Fi systems. So if you're going through ninety-seven, not necessarily right or wrong, but like say El Costilla has guest Wi-Fi. You're driving by there. If we don't get bus radio service there, you can connect to that Wi-Fi and the phone will get service there. So it gets all of our radio coverage plus anywhere where we can get onto a Wi-Fi system.
We tested both, because there was another company and this company was the better of the two.
Correct. And then on top of that, so for the same price, for the eighteen seventy, they gave us six additional radios. This is gonna allow us to have radios for anybody who would need to be contacted during an emergency to make sure that the kids get home safe or don't get in at all if we don't want them to get in. And on top of which, they threw in GPS for a bus. So now we know within two minutes where our buses are.
That's important.
That was a big upgrade.
That's a big upgrade.
So, and that was all for the same price as we were paying before. Lease price didn't change at all. It actually went down before the GPS, but I thought that was a, a big safety improvement for a small price. We have, you'll see, the printers are on here, approval for the printers. Normally, what we do is we do lease every four years on printers. I pushed it off a year to save us money last year. Four of the printer, three of the printers are not working so hot anymore. They're six years old. They're starting to fall off of the service agreements. So we replaced it. It's going to be less than the lease that I let lapse at the end of seventeen, eighteen. This lease is going to be a lower price than that lease. So we had a gap year, and I plan to do that from now on. I took out a forty-eight-year, a forty-eight-month installment purchase agreement for these printers. At the end of forty-eighth month, we'll just go onto a service. We won't buy printers for five years, so always have that one year in there with no payments on the printers. What we've decided to do is we have one hub on each floor for teaching staff at the high school. And then an additional printer that will be able to handle calendars, newsletters, and will also be able to be used in the graphics lab, which should cost a great deal less than the current printer that's in there.
Because I was remiss before in not mentioning that Lisa produced this calendar that you received in the mail. And we had to send it out to be printed, but next year, we'll be able to do it on our own machine.
Correct.
A lot of work went into this and Lisa did a great job.
Thank you.
And then finally, we've got the tax warrant today. Taxes went down nine and a half percent in every district.
What a place to be.
In every district except for Tustin, which got a twelve and a half percent drop. And that was because they, well, that was because of their equalization rate. The state increased it, it was fifty-four percent, now it's fifty-six percent. So they got about a twelve and a half percent drop. But all in all, taxes are going down. And we'll, we intend to raise them back up to the seventeen, to the eighteen, nineteen levels in twenty twenty-one.
And we're not gonna do the extra two percent, correct?
Correct. Correct. We're just gonna go back to what it is.
What it was, right. So not even gonna add two percent to it.
It was about fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. That's the goal for twenty twenty-one, fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Back to what it was in Ohio.
The county is no longer collecting on our behalf. I don't know if we announced this in a previous board meeting, but that is the reason for the later collection dates. You'll see on the tax warrant that we're collecting until November twenty-fifth. It's usually the third or the fourth. The county will no longer collect anything on our behalf. So we've gotta do it ourselves and it's due to the county on the sixth.
I did ask posties if they would facilitate that and they declined.
They also declined to facilitate the tax bills.
Have we found a new vendor yet?
We have not. And every single municipality, school district and governmental entity in Sullivan County is still using that.
That's why I asked posties to facilitate it.
There's not a single municipality that was able to escape that this year. It is going much smoother this year. The only hiccup I've had is these numbers didn't come until this morning, but that was not, they're doing that was New York State's doing. They're making some adjustments to star. Might be worth looking at a later board meeting date next August. A lot of the school districts do later board meeting dates because the state sometimes decides to make changes. And if the state sends something to Deer Park tomorrow saying you have to change an exemption on somebody, we've gotta come back in next week and do a whole new tax warrant. So hopefully, they don't. I don't anticipate they will.
And if there are changes, it's pennies, right? It's small numbers.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it could be a rounding error. It might not even affect it in some cases. Depends on the amount. The one that came in this morning would have been a dollar for a million-dollar house. But changing the tax warrant is easier than changing the tax bill.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little bit.
And that's all I've got for you tonight.
Any questions for Caleb?
I have a question. I know that we encourage parents to fill out the forms for income, but I've heard of a few schools in Sullivan County that get the free lunches for most of their district. And they have, the teachers have the forms with them and they encourage at Open House and then at parent-teacher conferences to fill it out, even if you think, you don't know if you qualify, but to fill out the form anyway, because I know that there are quite a few people that are embarrassed by their income level and they don't want to fill out the form. So they just send in lunch with their child, but this would be a great help to them, but yet there's still that embarrassment part. So is it possible to have that be a way to encourage parents to fill it in? Like speak about it at Open House? I know that Open House at that high school is not as filled as McKenzie, but maybe teacher meetings or something like that to encourage them to fill it out. And if they don't qualify, they don't qualify. But if it is in that number, then that's more people. Like I know three families that, that live here that just this year are filling out the paperwork because they were too embarrassed.
There's a number of families that won't do that. Yeah, that wouldn't be a terrible idea and we especially need to, we still need to figure out a way to track things like that in the elementary school, because it's still important for state aid purposes.
Right.
That's one of the bigger challenges of CEP that I've read is that some of the school districts, how do you get free lunch numbers? When everybody just gets free lunch anyway. Nobody wants to sign up, but it's still used for state aid.
So I, I know a teacher in a Sullivan County school where her district, the teachers got enough copies for each kid and they sent it home with a note to the parents and they all collected it. And then that went to the office and they checked off that they got all the students. And it was like, they use an incentive for the classroom to get their parents to fill it out and send it in. And now their district has, their whole district has free breakfast and free lunch.
Well, I can get them the forms. That would be up to the principals and the superintendents and the teachers, whether they wanna give them out. But I mean, I have no problem giving them the forms.
Is there anything that restricts us from mailing it home with a letter?
Exactly. I don't think so.
And I'll do that. Better off mailing it home, I think. Kids are gonna take it home, probably throw it away. Your parents don't look, you don't get lost in the background. And if they're already embarrassed, I don't wanna hand it to them in a public forum. I can mail it to them with a letter. Think that'll work. We should definitely do that. We should definitely come up with a form. I'll do that. That's a good thing. Done. Any other questions for Mr. Russell? Thank you, sir. Yes, it's my turn. I didn't really have a report, but I will say, as you can see, we are moving in the right direction, which is a good thing, because a year ago, when I decided to run and I got elected and I went and sat with Mr. Morgana and Mr. Russell, saw the numbers, I said to myself, "What are you doing?" But we are moving in the right direction, from a negative to a positive. Our cafeteria is, is moving in the right direction. So as you can see with the new board and the administration, this school district will come to the top again. Cream always rises to the top and we will be there eventually. So I'm very happy with the way things are going and I commend everybody for their efforts. Thank you. Moving on. Public comment on the agenda. Go ahead.
First of all, thank you so much for approving SROs. I certainly am comforted in that. It's appreciated. We had SROs a number of years back, you know, gentlemen, stayed pleased here. And it was just, before human end was comforting. The other thing I wanted to ask about is the free lunch. The way it is now, I'm not mistaken, every, every child who buys lunch, pretty reduced or actually, at least full-price order, is required to take X amount of food.
Correct.
Even if they tell the adults that they don't like it, they don't want it. So what happens is they walk out of the line and it goes nowhere. You have, you can imagine how we feel about that. So when everybody is free now, are there requirements?
All the same ones.
For children to eat things they don't want?
Yes, all of the same ones. They have to have a certain amount of grains.
They don't have to eat it to take it.
Correct.
They have to take it and then they can throw it away.
What we're trying to work on, and Jill has been working on this with me in the high schools, providing more durable things that qualify, that they can set someplace and can be reused. I don't know, I've gotta talk to Jill. I don't know where we're at with that, but there should always be an option. They have to take a fruit, per se.
And Scott was looking into that last year as well.
Apples, which you can reuse, they're much easier to.
It can't be resold, but it can be repurposed.
And they can't, they can't go back into the kitchen.
No.
So for example, in the high school, anything like that, apples is really the best example. The kids know and they leave them right at the front, where we have a microwave, et cetera, et cetera. And that's where they leave them and any student, usually by the end of three lunch periods, everything has disappeared.
They are exhaustive on that, too. I got a cafeteria audit this year and we did, we did very well in the review. But one of the minor comments they made was they said, I don't remember the ounces. That's more on Jill's area. But we were supposed to give eight ounces of rice for high schoolers and we were giving about seven and a half ounces of rice or something. It was, it was minor like that. It was like within an ounce or two or something, or you gave one too many chicken nuggets. But they're down to that point when they come in and audit us. And so they're gonna make us do a fruit, a grain, the main course, and then a drink of some sort. And we've gotta hit all the.
I guess it depends, you know, teachers, on top of teaching, everything that we are required to teach, we also have passions about certain things, so we've brought that into our classrooms. And I talk to my kids about the waste and encourage. So I know the record, but I encourage, you know, these are the reasons we shouldn't waste. We should try to, you know, the whole thing. So maybe education is part of eliminating some of the waste. I don't know. It drives me nuts, so to speak. We have to talk about that.
Those are some of the stuff you're going down to the backpack program.
Yes, it does. Any, but anything that leaves the line is not supposed to go. It can get repurposed somewhere else. I don't know if we can do the backpack program. I have to look into that. But anything that leaves the line, there are certain restrictions of what we can do with it.
But we were looking into that program that they had in Indiana, right?
Yeah, I know that when we went to visit Middletown, they did not do that specifically. They encouraged the students to take home any of theirs individually and not gather them together. But they also have an evening program and they also feed their kids in the summertime. So those are some of the things that they have already in place. But the ideas behind, when a kid touches a food, the ideas behind that, don't give it to somebody else. Same thing with, you know, any type of thing, you try to teach kids not to share, you know, drinks and sodas and water and water cups with others. They're kind of trying to say the same thing. So that's something that I know that we're going to have to look at here, about we manage some of those things this year.
And we'll have to see what the volume is with the new programs.
Yes.
To touch on the sustainable programs, Scott actually spearheaded this. We were gonna be moving to silverware, correct? We're no longer gonna be doing the plastics.
Yeah. So we will look into some of those conservation efforts. We thought about how we can do composting or what other type of ways that we can conserve. And there's a difference between recycling and conservation. So I understand both of those. So those are some of the initiatives that we might undertake as we go through that this year.
Is that a Feed the Bears program?
You have to have a secure location.
Yeah, it's a crowd. Far away from the building, please. Any other public comment? Mr. Ween?
In regard to the MOU and the resource management, I guess this is written in stone, but there are five divisions where they're allowed to leave the campus.
Correct.
And C is to obtain food and return to camp to eat, no more than twice during shift. The closest place to the corner store. The closest place is owner's store. And you order a burger, you can be going for twenty-five minutes right there. And nothing, it would be terrible if we had a scene where a resource office immediately responded to the stomach pain. Even worse, if he was eating lunch off campus, it's gonna happen.
I don't think, based on the conversations we've had with both SROs, that that'll occur. I think they're gonna be on site.
Free lunch or eat cafeteria?
I think they're gonna be on site the whole day unless they're called out for an emergency.
Well, that's one of the conditions, that they can leave the lunch. It says it right here.
It also says nine to five, but their hours are not gonna be nine to five.
Well, obviously they're not punching a clock, but it just means that they're here.
Well, they do punch a clock. And interestingly enough, they punch a clock in Monticello.
Really?
They start their shift there, they drive here. It's all part of the eight hours. But we were able to work out a schedule in both buildings where they'll be here from the beginning to the end of the school day. And I don't see them going out. There's no place to go out to get a quick bite to eat.
No. And if you go to Bearville, it'll be even longer.
So they'll, they'll get the packed sandwich like the rest of us do and it'll be, we're gonna see how it goes. If that, if we have issues like that, they'll be addressed. Sheriff Crumley is very much interested in this working out and so are we.
And one other question along the lines of security, that's very important to you and you are going with the card system. The push-button entrance at the fitness center is still active. When is that gonna be discontinued? Because I see young people in there at night who don't have the card yet, but they're still in there.
All right. We were waiting to hear from the folks at the fitness center when everybody's card worked. Because remember, Troy shut it off and not everybody's card was working. People couldn't get in. Is that now done? Everybody has a card?
Well, as senior volunteers, everyone who is certified to be a volunteer is, has the card. As far as the younger people at night, I have no idea.
We'll take the battery out of the reader. Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Has anybody looked over the warrants and the minutes? So I will need a motion to approve.
Make that motion. I second.
Three oh one through eight oh five under nine oh one approval of consent items. Stacy, you ready? Motion and you second it? Okay. Very good. I have two walk-ons here, correct? Everybody? Kristen, for the consent. Kristen?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda? Yes?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Done. Old business. Anybody have any old business? New business? Anybody have new business? I do. Two walk-ons. Walk-on motion for weight of courses. Be resolved. The Board of Education, if the Central School District authorizes and approves the weighting of courses, beginning with ninth graders, in two thousand nineteen will be the following. Regents course, zero percent, AP course, one point zero three percent, and college course, one point oh five percent. I need a motion.
To make the motion.
Just a question. What does it mean, the zero percent for the Regents course?
They have, it's the same, it's worth the same amount where it's, as if they take an advanced placement course or a college course, it's worth more. So an A would be, an A in a regular course would really be like an A plus.
A Regents class is not a standard, so it has changed over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Kristen. We already had the discussion. I'll need a vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Joanna?
Stacy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. I have another walk-on motion. Attendance, photech and new vision. Be resolved. The Board of Education, if the eligible Central School District authorizes and approves the minimum of ninety-five percent attendance at the vocational, technical, education and new vision program. No more than five percent, nine days unexcused absence. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can I do it all in favor and just say aye? Or do, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Very good. Thirty-two that I have. Is there anything else that you can do with that? That's it? All right. Second public comment. Anybody wanna talk about anything besides the agenda? Feel free, please. Mrs. Wade.
Are there going to be two classes for kindergarten?
One class right now with twenty-two?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
You said we got around thirty, right?
If it gets to thirty, we'll split it.
How many eights are in that, Mr. Krebs?
One.
One eight in that class?
And what is the elementary school?
I, I don't know. I can get that as we go through. It changes every day. If you wanna come with me, I can get the one that was printed out the other day.
Okay. I was gonna ask, it was nice to hear that you have the junior Regents results. Will that be available to the public? Is that on the website?
I don't think it has been put on the website.
Not yet.
That's good news. They should come out there.
It, it will.
And it can't.
She's not here, but nobody else is out there.
She's here?
No, no. The door is out there. Nobody else.
And see, look, you said to the cafeteria, you've got health insurance, your health insurance costs for full-time staff. How do you?
Oh, we didn't. We, we, that just happened naturally. We had a full-time employee left. New employee came in. The health insurance situation was less expensive.
I have her covered.
So that was twenty-four of the fifty-four or so, thereabouts.
When do you want to roll that Regents information?
Can you do it?
Do it Monday. I just got it today, right before the meeting.
Just got it today before the meeting, so they'll put it out on the website. There's no school tomorrow. They'll put it out on Monday.
It'd be nice to get it so we can get it. Does that just get used?
Respect it.
I would just like to thank our Board of Administration, Principal Maxson, and Dr. Morgana, of course, Mr. Krebs, for putting out so many fires last year. And I've been looking forward to this year. It's so relaxed. I can't even tell you, be able to tell you what that feels like, how bad it was and how bad it felt prior to this. We were all having fun. And as I've said before, I really, really appreciate the quietness by which you led, Principal Maxson, and of course, Dr. Morgana, along the same lines. I really appreciate that. I'm not speaking, I'm not giving up on anyone but myself, and I know I do speak for others in regards to this. And thank you all here before you scan in. And so, I'll thank you all for bringing us to a life of the good.
We're all here for the same reason.
There we are. Thank you. Any other public comment? With that being said, I need a motion to enter into executive session for personnel matter.
Make that motion. Second it.
And I don't expect any business afterwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.